Okay.
A regular session, uh, Board of Education meeting is called a session. Please stand for, uh, please.
We're going to be applying in the United States of America. We do the dollar, which stands on the nation. And there's all thirteen.
Okay, you'll have to explain what happened.
Just the Board of Education. So I'm just, of course, on the Board of Education. This will be Dan's last meeting and Carly was here for her last meeting.
Thank you.
Jim, um, almost comes up between now and January. This will be their last meeting. So I just wanted to, uh, say thank you and appreciate your free of years of service. Especially hired superintendent. That was a very, um, big process and, uh, what the politics of the process. Please stand, um, Carly.
Put a nay on that.
Um, the second point, uh, uh, on the agenda is the H and K construction contract approval.
A little background on that. We received five construction managers and contractor proposals. We said of those, yeah, we interviewed two, three. Great. Interviewed Frank, um, and the, uh, we're in here in trip as well. So I'm excited for that.
Yeah.
Everything you want to say.
Yeah, uh, Greg, our sixth Greg, Tom. Yeah, uh, I asked for an eagle belt, what's it, um, I asked for. That was great, maybe. I could, uh, actually what you look at. So looking, looking for my, uh. We, um, we heard with the, so that's how you define what I thought that they're close. Uh, they have great, um, love of, you know, help with some people that don't use. Can you push it back for a person's experience through?
I may remove this one, move to approve the triple wellman contract for CMGC services for the capital bond. Construction project has been moved and seconded. All those who approved.
Discussion.
Or discussion?
No.
No. There was no discussion, so all those, uh.
In favor, say aye. I was opposed, Nick. Uh, the motion passes.
I'm going to approve the pre-construction service contract fee to triple wellman not to exceed fifty-one thousand sixty dollars.
The motion for the pre-construction service contract fee to triple wellman do not succeed to not to succeed. Fifty-one thousand sixty dollars, uh, has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion around that? Um, all those in favor? Aye, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Uh, the motion passes.
Mike, will they give any update on the first bit of the design process?
Um, yeah.
That's what I'm, you know, um, you know, before here, how I'm going to place it, if you're going to approve. I picture with Nick, why it's, uh, start program to design. So the activity concept, we've got to start. What are the challenges, the types, what's supposed to be structure, so, like. Working with staff, I expect, I expect the needs, so we can create programs, programs. But programs run well. We had a lot of, we had a lot of input from staff, uh, they're just working through, uh, with some, and, and. Something doesn't play, I like to decide, stop you know, things I did not have to watch. For what, uh, I mean, we've got a lot of information right now, and we're just, you know.
Can you focus on safety and environmental issues? Some of those things that I think, uh. We, we got some other things, you know, probably with my name. No.
I don't know, like, I don't know, I actually, I don't know.
I think it was, yeah.
No, 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 there's some marketing.
Yeah, there's school campuses marked up now.
Yeah.
But we're down to the process, um, uh, because we have to sort out a way of, you know, survey and decide. To cut it out, that's, you know, we need to stop you too. We don't really have any, stuff we can, we can, we can, some of the, uh, problems right now.
So you've met a couple times, is that, it says, have you any respect? You see early design meetings between, uh, in one of these groups?
Yeah.
Have you members of the students and staff?
There were four of them. The month, or the month of, I forget, my, so there's, I moved up behind, what we had, so, uh, we had.
And we got a time, a time.
There's one, um, program that I, or you need to, uh, to, to, putting that. Are you ready enough? The line show that was meeting, it would stop, stop it, so what, why are we actually trying to achieve? They're ready enough, the line showed that we're moving them, it would stop, stop it, so, why are we actually trying to do that? The only design they're in that's going to be, um, so, 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 that program, that, for a, a provider.
That's where I was trying to reveal, unless I'm not, I think, I do feel like, you know, everyone always has a complaint. No one ever has compliments, hardly. And yet, you know, so if we get a few more focus bodies that can just say, hey, we're not, or, here's my thought, just you can throw things in there, like, yeah, it's good.
More connection now, though, compared to, if we would, we would have to go through some, uh, like, more than two people. At least you have a cross, right? It would have, it would, you know, where that whole makes it the one line, but, you know.
Yeah.
That's, that's supposed to be.
Thank you. I know it's a long process, but.
Uh, I'm sorry. I know, um, you have a special in mind, with a list, so, it, for that fifth plan, or, really, just when you arrive here, right after the meeting, but, it, it, that you're just, you're, for some, so, where, it's a, our son's up to it. But then, early back to the, uh, sort of, some of this.
And what we heard was, the rest of these guys, we said, there's a lot of people that are hungry for work.
Much more than a puppy.
That's right. So, it would be, you might, it would be, so, 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 I'll forget.
Works to our advantage.
Well, that is, well, Sean, how many have you been these? Any, really? In twenty-three, six? Like, how many, three topics, that, came right, so, it, I, it, five, six, five.
Okay? Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, the next, uh, part would be the consent agenda.
I mean, to, to the consent agenda, as presented.
Second.
Uh, consent agenda is being moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Here, uh, discussion, so, the, uh, consent agenda, um, we're moving seconded, um, I, um, um, I've called for the vote. Uh, aye. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. You can carry the question.
Um, I don't know when you can project him, but our tech guy is on the road. He's coming, he's, 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 he's behind the screen tonight. Um, but you heard from our construction update, that's been a huge focus of my work lately. Uh, we're getting that done, and we're, uh, about two weeks away from getting back over to the district office. Probably, uh, just, uh, you know. Probably work to get over there. Um, yeah, team is with the design group, uh, that, uh, we just heard. Um, really just kind of making sure that we're doing, attempting bond, but also prioritizing things like city. Um, we've had some staff involved in that, which we've gone along. We did a staff recognition at the end of the year, just to give some service awards, uh, see if people did, uh, and, and, uh, product hundred. When we keep the show, we just see a lot of people, but, I mean, we pretty much, we did, we got pretty much everybody allowed his house to come and celebrate. We gave, uh, anybody that was nominated, it was a pure nomination this year, uh, but TJ's kids made medallions. They have, like, little dog nominee in the year, so, people can collect those year after year, I think, in their classroom. Who really want to do, but that's a cheap way to do a lot of, great recognition, uh, kind of create some tradition there as well. Um, summer school's up and running this week, we have about forty kids in our elementary. Um, and also, listening to our conspiracy, and they have probably thirty, like, kids, years, I can tell, our, that makes it all up. Um, and then we have some different camps going on, we have, we have, our KIA, uh, may have a leadership camp later on in the summer. Uh, so it's kind of coming along, you know, across that, so, uh, we've been very happy, we did congratulations. Last, I mean, we met, and, uh, super impressed with, um, just the ornaments on some of our kids' gowns, hats, and very tastefully done, very representative culture pieces in our community. Even with outside, it's been raining, looks like breeze. Um, we've maxed the capacity of our, our, uh, field, and a lot of people bringing chairs, and it so worked out well, we have great, uh, get handicap, uh, access down on the track, so people will come from there. Um, we graphed our budget process, kind of bargaining is done, uh, that, that was an interesting process to go through first time. And we'll feel good about the outcomes of that, and teach you the, meaning of value of that process. So, excited for that work. Um, next meeting, we'll be swinging in the board members, people's been working hard on sorting that out. We're working on that, and we're in the throes of summer maintenance, we have all the great camps going on, our campus. And we have the pictures in there, some of these hats and things, uh, that were in there, so, that's all I have since the last time we met.
Angie, what's I gonna be here tonight, gonna travel to the hospital?
We're recruiting another student, uh, we are still a poor person, Bill Block.
Uh, so, on the agenda, this is a point in time we have for the audience time. Uh, citizen input is, uh, not, not, on non-agenda items shall be three minutes per person, thirty minutes per agenda item. Citizen input on agenda items will occur after the board discussion and before a vote. Speakers may be provided objective comments or criticism of district operations and programs. For complaints about individuals, the district has a board policy and complaint process. Please contact the district office for guidance on filing a complaint. Uh, we have two, um, two audience members that would like to, um, speak. Uh, the first one would be Oscar Juarez.
Oh, boy. It's, it's hard for me to do this, because, uh, let me start by, uh, according to Jamie, it's no, perfect. Cody, a view of that, that it has taken eighteen months, or, or about four semesters for me to be disappointed. You have told this day, uh, and completely, you know. Uh, so, with that said, I am here to ask in public for a grant compliance report for CP. Uh, like I said, I was out there helping, yeah, instructor for at least, uh, uh, the better part for first semesters, and I, uh, I witnessed it all, I saw it all, and there was, there was a lot of money spent on equipment that, according to the grant requirements, requires uh, a course, curriculum, and then, uh, a list of outcomes of testing, and, and I saw nothing of it, nothing done. So, uh, in this, uh, grant request, I would like to see a summary of TP grants received over the course of four years. An overview of how those funds were allocated and spent, with examples if possible. Highlights of any curriculum improvements or programs developed using grant fund. Posits and outcomes, or student success stories resulting from these, this efforts. Copies of the original grant application, better understand, uh, the intended goals. Records of any equipment that was traded, exchanged, or otherwise applied for, uh, purchase of new equipment along with related invoices. Is that, I can see. Uh, I do have some paperwork here, and I'm not sure if you're aware of this, Mike. Uh, is this good for you? And, uh, Mr. Whitman, you, you have been great insight, great help of this, you know, helping that with your position, you do something about it. Uh, Mr. Schecht, you, you talked last September, and you said you might come up with somebody else, you just never got back to me. And, and I understand your, your position, because the shop is building a trailer, and nobody wants to stir the pot. When there is.
Your three minutes.
Thank you. Hey, Dan, thank you for your service.
Excellent.
Uh, but, yeah, can I make one comment? Yeah, um, you know, I did, Oscar emailed me a very, I don't know if that's the same list or similar list, um, asking for a grant public report. Um, I also referred him to the policy around doing a records request. Um, I think that maybe the most appropriate way, if he chooses to submit that, we will respond accordingly. Um, you know, if we have that information, we'll provide it, but, of the law's group, we don't have to create things that we don't, in our possession, so I would work the法律部 or continue to work the法律部, and I want that issue, take your advice on that.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, the next, uh, audience member to speak is Justin Flynn.
Sorry to interrupt you so much.
Big time.
So I had requested when, April after the election, um, just, I would like the time to address, um, the board, staff, community, all at the same time, to talk about my, um, being on the board, and, and before I'm at, I don't know, otherwise I would pick up from those where. Um, so, uh, hi, my name is Justin Flynn, and I was recently elected, not sworn in, to rule my school district for, for position three. So mid-April of this year, I'd briefly served in the, in position two on the board, and I would like to offer an explanation of why I chose to approach the design. Before that, I had, before that, I'd be have, I'd like to be, uh, blunt and transparent about my intention serving on the board. I'm a lifelong resident of this district and community, I grew up in Grand Ron, graduated from the school district. I'm a Grand Ron tribal citizen, and currently serve as a school administrator for Grand Ron Travel School, Shawishaw Elite School. I have a bachelor's degree in race and ethnic studies from leaders in Oregon, a master's degree in elementary teaching, and, uh, from Wausau University, and a graduate certificate in indigenous educational leadership from Kansas State University. Those are the little story things about me. Education is my passion, advocacy is my purpose, and nothing brings me more joy than to combine both of those things to support the improvement of systems that were not designed for success in marginalized communities. It would be natural that you hear that and assume that it is my intention to serve in the best interest of our tribal community only, and you would not be correct in that, but I will tell you that anything that is good for our tribal community is good for every student in this district and every family that we serve. It's my intention to advocate for improved systems for all students within Willamette School District. Whether you recognize it or not, this community is made up of youth with diverse backgrounds, and these backgrounds have resulted in various to success. Even if the only factor affecting them is that they are attending a school in small rural community. The reality is that there are fewer opportunities available. That being said, lack of opportunity has never stopped anyone that has attended the school district from success and greatness. I mentioned previously that I'm a school administrator at Shawishaw Elite School, and it brings me a measurable joy to my life every single day. Unique thing about, one of the unique things about our school is that we share students with the Willamette and Shering School District. Uh, they attend Shawishaw Elite School the first half of their day, and then they disperse to either Willamette or Shering for the remainder of the day. When I accepted this, it, the interim position on the board, I knew it would be brief, and I wanted to feel out the possibility of having it in May. I love my time on the board, and I enjoy hearing about successes, to be deeper with questions, and supporting the community and staff. Although I was asked about my role and how I felt about conflicts, I truly did not anticipate anything coming at that I thought would result in a really pushing my commission. Nevertheless, an incident did, uh, did take place, and at the time, I felt it would be unfair to address this concern while also doing my school work. Looking back, I'm sure that that could have been, that this could have been resolved without my need to resign, but I did not want any staff to feel that I had leveraged my position on the board to address the specific conflict. I was hasty in my decision that I had accepted it. It was my intention to pull my name from the ballot, and I was two days too late, and, you know, I had court talks to do, so I had every intention of not accepting it, but elected. But then I saw the results, and spoke with a few community members, I felt called on to serve this community, and I was humbled by all the debate, and I vote to serve and honor to, and go the honor to accept that. I requested that prior to being sworn in, I be given the ability to address the board, staff, and community to be transparent about my departure and change of heart. That way, there's no misunderstandings about my intentions while serving on the board. Moving forward, I will continue to operate with transparency, I want nothing but success for this district, these students, and this staff. I will continue to listen with intention and ask questions with purpose, and hope that it means others to do the same. Community matters more now than ever, and I am humbled by the opportunity to be a part of this board and work with the school district and end members to support this, but, definitely works, one of the things. I'm excited.
Thank you, Justin. Uh, any other comments? Yeah. Is he good? Yeah. The next, next part that we're at is decision items. Um, we need to, uh, look at the adoption of resolutions, twenty-four, twenty-five, earlier, kind of, nine, appropriations, and, uh, for, uh, uh, here.
I saw, right? You're sitting there, right? I'll take him.
You can have some more, sir.
Yeah, I saw Louie. Cause he read, he read the whole thing, so.
Yeah. Um, the resolution twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, oh-eight, and oh-nine, authorization of appropriation answers for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year have been ruled, and this second, good. Is there any discussion? No, no discussion. Uh, for all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Uh, the motion, the resolution passes.
I move to third, the three-year contract to clear trail CPAs for auditing services beginning July first, twenty-twenty-five. Second.
The, um, the motion has been moved and seconded for the approval of a three-year contract to clear trail CPAs for auditing services beginning July first, twenty-twenty-five. Is there any discussion?
You'd like to put these up? Lucy, do you feel comfortable with them, that I kind of read through?
Yeah, it became highly recommended by, yeah, Mel Carlton, that they're, you know, we got two R, P, S, that, really.
I think, you live in your neighborhood, you put that one. Exactly.
Yeah.
So, they're still, they're still districts that just got their, uh, some new, uh, little. With Elly, Gunsmere Stadium, yeah.
Yeah, and they're pretty quick, I mean, that.
They're very quick, yeah, I'm Mel Carlton, so they normally have their op report to their board in October, remember?
Okay.
Or, or during March and April.
Do you talk to Gaston at all, or? Do you talk to Gaston at all, or do they have most Gaston ones on?
Oh, I did.
Yeah, cause they're all basically the same relative size, and it was interesting that they had, like, large districts and all the, kind of, district. We all have, uh, district.
Yeah, yes. It looks good.
No more discussions? Um, all those in favor of approving the three-year contract to clear trail CPA for auditing services beginning July first, twenty-twenty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, all those opposed, say nay. Uh, the motion passes. Is that it, Dan?
I may be approved the Willamette Education Association contract through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight.
Uh, the motion to approve the Willamette Education Association contract through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I would just say, I want to give a thank you to our teacher group that worked on that, and also, we said, Frank, uh, for, kind of, be my subjects to do that process, they're invaluable and kind of keeping me abreast of some historical things that have been traditionally sticking forward, but, um, you know, I think, I think we cleaned up a lot of language, I think we we also like to provide attorney to, to get some new pieces in there, and, uh, working statutes, um, you know, different things like that. So I think we're in great shape, we cleaned up time, I think everybody understands it, a good core of us that understand, we created depth, and, and, uh, I would to do, like, clear line by line, pretty much, three times? At least, as a group, and, yeah, so, we, we did a good job of that, I appreciate it.
Right, thank you. So the motion to approve the Willamette Education Association contract through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Uh, I move to approve the confidential contract until June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven.
Second.
The motion to approve the confidential contract until June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven has been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one?
Questions? Are they always two-year contracts?
The last three or four happened, yeah.
The only, the only comment I would make is, we may need to look at market adjustments, particular finances, school financial people, and being hot in here, hey, man. We may need to agree with that.
This one I hear? No, I mean, yeah, hey, keep good ones.
So, I may, I may, this all be looking at, so, just, that's, 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 that's market.
Sounds good.
For all those in favor for, to approve the confidential until contract until June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say nay. Aye. Pass, so, the motion passes.
I move to approve the administrative contract until June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven. Second.
Uh, the motion has been moved and seconded for administrative contracts, to approve the administrative contracts until June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven. Any discussion on this? No discussion? Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Uh, the motion passes. My future agenda items?
Yeah, we just have our organizational meeting in July, um, we'll go back to our, uh, second, um, Monday, and the month, so that'll follow on July fourteenth. And that will be the time that we'll, we will also start.
And that's probably the seventh one.
Yes, that's what, please.
We can change it, but they're meeting, we're here, we're, next year. And I may be calling in, just, what I mean. Popping already, if you have a lot of contracts on the first week of July, right? So, that's the simple one. Yeah. Okay. All right. I'm moving to turn.
All right. Can I move the second to the third turn? Meeting, good for turn.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I get it. Get a sign of a bunch of stuff.
Hey. You need to have the practice now?
I'm pretty sure that's, but, you know, it's just, you need to put it down.